End of week.
Okay, it is four o'clock. I will call the September eighteenth Salina City Commission meeting to order. First of all, we'll look at staff for confirmation that Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you very much. May we have a roll call?
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longby.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Will those who are able, please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no awards or proclamations today. That will move us to item five consent agenda.
Item five point one, approve the minutes of the meeting of September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Item five point two, approve resolution number two three dash eight one four nine, appointing a human relations commission member and a Salina Police Department officer to the law enforcement citizen review board. And item five point three, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a vault closure agreement for an underground sidewalk vault located at four oh one West Iron Avenue, and to execute an addendum to the city of Salina project number two two zero zero nine, storm sewer repair construction contract with Smokey Hill LLC.
Thank you. Is there an item a commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
We approve the consent agenda as receded.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items five point one, five point two, and five point three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes five zero. That will lead us to administration.
Item six point one, approve ordinance number two three dash one 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 six four on second reading, amending section thirty-eight dash forty-two of the Salina Municipal Code pertaining to parking on private property without permission, and repealing existing section thirty-eight dash forty-two.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-three dash one 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 six four was passed on first reading on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
None.
From the public? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, move approval of ordinance number twenty-three dash one 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 six four on second reading.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash one 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 six four on second reading. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Longby.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That item passes five zero. Will lead us to item six point two.
Item six point two, approve ordinance number two three dash one 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 six nine on second reading, uh, reading, excuse me, levying Salina Business Improvement District Number One service fees for two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item?
Nope.
Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring that item back to the commission for action.
We approve ordinance number two three dash one 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 six nine.
Second.
Second reading.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash one 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 six nine on second reading, levying Salina Business Improvement District Number One service fees for two thousand twenty-four. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Longby.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That item passes five zero. That will lead us to item six point three.
Item six point three, consider a construction project authorization for city staff to self-perform improvements and award contractor bids for certain work for the building located at the Salina Tennis Center in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and five cents, with a six percent construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and authorizing the city manager to manage and authorize the project upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the purchasing policy.
Mr. Hammond.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. Jeff Hammond, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, I have for your consideration today a construction project that's a public improvement to the Salina Tennis Facility. Uh, it has generated lots of conversations since the tennis courts were built at Kenwood Park. In two thousand twenty-one, the demolition of the rodeo arena and the old swimming pool was completed, which allowed for the tennis court improvements to occur on the site from the partnership with Salina Tennis Alliance. As part of the agreement for the public-private partnership with, uh, Salina Tennis Alliance, city facilities maintenance staff were to provide initial, uh, basic serviceability work on the former pool building. However, the serviceability improvements were paused due to a request from Salina Tennis Alliance while they explored design and engineering uh, and funding for that former bathhouse space as a future tennis tournament center. Uh, as part of the in- the initial work as well, um, facilities maintenance staff through a contractor had a two-inch water line, uh, provided for the tennis facility, which would serve the, uh, building and also the adjacent bathroom house that has been renovated. It also would, uh, support the, uh, water, uh, on the facility, drinking fountains and water hydrants, uh, for the tennis courts as well. Uh, the cost savings from the original budget for the demolition and the city staff serviceability, uh, was, uh, projects, those projects combined to save a hundred thousand dollars, just over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the proposed bathroom project will renovate bathroom spaces on the north and south end of the former pool building while keeping the main center available, uh, for future improvements for tennis tournaments, programming rentals. Uh, the proposed bathrooms that we're, uh, proposing to today, uh, would be for seasonal use. Uh, the overall scope of the proposed improvements to the bathroom spaces are for bathroom accessibility, code compliance to increase the fixture count to meet the occupant load for the tennis facility, electrical service, and, um, uh, and also to improve the space, uh, per the bathroom refresh plan that we're, uh, we started with at Bill Burke Park. Uh, lastly, we would be replacing the flat roof on that building. Uh, the proposed bathroom model will be completed in a uniform, modern aesthetic, similar to what you might have saw at Bill Burke Park, uh, for the existing bathroom spaces and the concession space at Bill Burke Park. Uh, per the city building department, additionally, per the city building department, based on the year-round availability of the existing bathrooms adjacent to the tennis building, uh, the proposed project, um, would have a total combined occupant load of four hundred, uh, during the normal tennis season. So during that seasonal area of April through approximately early November, uh, the occupant load would be four hundred when the seasonal bathrooms, uh, get closed down for the winter. We would revert back to that existing adjacent bathroom space. Uh, additional, uh, the flat roof for the three sections of the tennis building will have a replacement roof and would ensure the preservation of the building and prevent leaking. Uh, additional portions of work, um, to support the overall project include, uh, brickwork, doors and hardware with time locks, uh, guttering, metal wrapped soffits and fascia, similar to Bill Burke, painting, plumbing, electricity, concrete, bathroom fixtures, partitions, ventilation, and epoxy floors or epoxy coatings on the floor, uh, the wet wall behind the fixtures, and base cove on the remainder. Uh, as described in the staff report, it's, uh, the city's intent to have the city's facilities maintenance superintendent, uh, manage this project in-house. The facility superintendent maintains a general contractor license for the city, for city permits and projects, and is a very experienced, uh, in the world of construction. The maintenance staff have met with many contractors to review the specifications and drawings for their section of the scope of work, including plumbing and roofing. From that review of the scope of work, bids and quotes were accepted from the contractor and for materials. Uh, the low bid for each of the construction trades and the materials are provided in your staff report. Uh, a copy of the city's purchasing policy is also been provided in the packet of the information. Uh, as a summary, the staff report states the, the different thresholds for purchasing and the need for competitive quotes and, and bids. Additionally, this Salina City Code provides that if the governing body finds that an alternative process, uh, is in the public interest, uh, it could be part of the proposed project authorization. Uh, options today for the city commission's consideration, option one, approve a motion for three items, authorizing the Salinas Tennis Center Building Improvement Project with a six percent contingency for a total project authorization of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, finding pursuant, and B, finding pursuant to Salina Code Section two dash two three five C that the proposed approach forward soliciting and awarding bids for each component of the project is in the public interest. C, authorizing the city manager or his designee to administer the project on the basis of bids solicited and awarded for each component in accordance with Salina Code and the purchasing policy. Uh, option two, approve a motion including the same elements of, uh, number of option one, A through C, with amendments as you deem appropriate. Three, postpone consideration of the project authorization, or four, uh, do not authorize the project and provide with, provide any further direction. Staff recommends option number one. Uh, I'll be available for any questions that you may have. Additionally, the facilities maintenance superintendent is available to, uh, answer any questions related to scope of work, drawings, or any of those specifications.
Okay, I'll start to my left. Any questions for Mr. Hammond?
The epoxy coatings, are those similar to what we've been doing in the newer restrooms we've been refurbishing in our parks?
Yes, sir. It's the same coatings we used at Bill Burke, same color scheme and same methods and means of doing that. We do it in-house. We buy the material and we've been doing it in-house. Uh, staff were trained to use that particular product, and they went through the training exercise with that company who provides that product.
Will all of this building have a roof on it, or some of it?
Uh, there is areas outside of the bathrooms to the north and south. Um, and, uh, I don't believe any of our scope has to do with it. Certainly, there's some cleanup effort that needs to be going through there. Uh, but I don't, we're really restricting this to the bathroom, to the electrical service, to the whole building, and, um, um, and accessing the bathrooms from the tennis side, from the tennis facility side.
Okay. Thank you.
Sort of a follow-up to that, ju- just to be clear, the access to the bathrooms would be from outside, not inside the building?
Be on the inside of the building, on the tennis court side. So we'll be removing some brick, uh, to create an accessible point for the public to enter from the tennis courts and go into those bathrooms, for the men's and women's side.
But the rest of the inside will be just rough and as it is now?
The main central portion will be available for future improvements, and I believe it's my understanding from recent conversations with Salina Tennis Alliance, they're still interested in doing a project there.
So we're not doing anything to the floor in the main?
No, sir.
Hallways?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, harkening, harkening back to the original agreement, it wa- and I was the one that suggested the word serviceable, and if I had it to do over again, I guess I'd, we would have defined that term a little bit more clearly, but it is, um, same scope in terms of renovating the bathroom spaces only. The added element is the roof work, recognizing that it's not watertight and needs to be serviced just to preserve the building, but beyond that, the scope hasn't changed from the original agreement, and if it would take additional fundraising or additional authorization to do anything else to that interior space.
But for inclement weather, you know, sudden thunderstorm, high wind, the inside of the building would be available for shelter?
Yeah, I, we'd have to look at what's stored in there and the available space, but it probably could be for emergency shelter, but not much else.
Yeah. That's it.
Yes, that was my question on the, what's in the building, if it's gonna be cleared out and?
It's, uh, there is some mild tennis storage in there that Salina Tennis Alliance has, keeps in there, but other than that, it was cleared out to prepare for, uh, ten- tennis. Um, it used to be, it used to be, we used to use it for storage, but all that was removed.
Storage that we had in there has been cleared out?
Well, that's been cleared out for some time.
Okay.
Yeah, we've relocated to other storage areas.
So the bulk of this project is gonna be done in-house outside of the roofing? Is that correct?
Uh, there are several contractors, uh, for plumbing, for roofing, and a few others that are on that list that are contractors. Uh, they will be working through our facilities maintenance staff or superintendent.
And they will be, these bathrooms will be closed at the same time we close all the parks' restrooms?
Approximately, yes. Typically, first of April through the end of October, first of November.
But then the, uh, restrooms to the side will be year-round?
Right, on the northwest side. Those are year-round bathrooms, heated.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize, make sure people understand, this was the original scope that was proposed, uh, to preserve the building and make the restrooms serviceable. So we're not doing anything additional. Back to the original plan.
The, the roof wasn't an additional item that we recognized after the Salina Tennis Alliance agreement, but yes, it's that original scope and waterproofing the roof.
Yep. And regarding that roof, I'm curious, what product are we using for that?
For the epoxy floor?
Oh, roof.
That's a great question. Um, Troy, would you mind joining me real quick?
Uh, the product for the roof would be Durlass, uh, supplied by Ryan Roofing.
Thank you.
Well, I, I kinda like this philosophy of how we're doing this. Uh, I'm surprised, I know Troy has a lot on his plate the way it is. No, I don't think individuals understand how many facilities we have, but, uh, Troy definitely has the ability to oversee this project. I think it'll save the taxpayers some dollars by having him oversee this, so I one-hundred percent approve of this plan. So, um, are there any questions or comments from the public? On this item? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, move to authorize the Salina Tennis Center Building Improvement Project in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and five cents, with a six percent contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Do you also go along with item B and C?
I'm sorry, yep.
Yep.
In one motion then. Uh, finding pursuant to Salina Code Section two dash two three five C that the proposed approach towards soliciting and awarding bids for each component of the project is in the public interest, and C, authorizing the city manager or his designee to administer the project on the basis of bids solicited and awarded for each component of the project in accordance with the city of Salina purchasing policy and Salina Code Section two dash two three five C.
Second. We have a motion and a second authorizing the Salina Tennis Center Building Improvement Project in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and five cents with a nine thousand, seven eighty-eight ninety-five or a s- or a six percent contingency for total project authorization not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Finding pursuant to the Salina Code Section two dash two three five C that the proposed approach towards soliciting and awarding bids for each component of the project is in the public interest, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to administer the project on the basis of bids solicited and awarded for each component of the project in accordance with the city of Salina purchasing policy and Salina Code Section two dash two three five C. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passes five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Hammond. That will lead us to item six point four.
Item six point four, approve ordinance number two three dash one 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 seven three on first reading, granting to Evergi Kansas Central, Inc., an electric franchise, prescribing the terms thereof and relating thereto, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or in conflict with the terms hereof.
Mr. Wood.
Mayor and Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. Uh, the city has a longstanding franchise agreement with Evergi and its predecessors. Uh, the most recent, uh, one of these was, uh, approved in two thousand and five, and it was a fifteen-year agreement. A franchise is an agreement that basically outlines the rules and regulations, um, that they're required to follow to use the right-of-way. Um, this agreement is very similar to previous agreements. Uh, the city and Evergi have been working together, uh, over the last, actually a couple of year timeframe, just to update the language and update, uh, some of the definitions to better align with the practices that we're using today. So some of the, uh, components of the agreement, um, we have it set at a twenty-year term. Um, it's, as I said, updated and more clearly stated definitions. Uh, it does have a re-opener provision if there's any changes to state or federal law, um, that would substantially change, uh, the conditions. Um, the franchise fee is set at six percent. This is something that was done in two thousand and sixteen. That is the maximum allowable, um, franchise fee, um, for this type of franchise. Um, and then it just, uh, has language that grants the use of the right-of-way and, and the provisions for how they would use that right-of-way. Um, I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Start to my right?
No questions.
Nope.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the public on this item? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, move we approve ordinance number two three dash one 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 seven three, granting the Evergi Kansas Central Incorporated and its successors and assigns an electrical franchise, prescribing the terms thereof and relating thereto, and repealing all ordinance and parts of ordinances inconsistent with or in conflict with the terms hereof on the first reading.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash one 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 seven three, granting to Evergi Kansas Central, Inc. and its successors and assigns an electric franchise, prescribing the terms thereof and relating thereto, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or in conflict with the terms hereof on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passes five zero. That will bring us to development business.
Item seven point one, request to authorize city staff preparation of a special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phase Two of the Wheatland Valley Edition.
Okay, due to a conflict, uh, with my current business, I am going to turn this over to Vice Mayor Longby.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. We have before you a request to authorize city staff, specifically the engineering department staff, to prepare a special assessment feasibility report for Phase Two of the Wheatland Valley Edition. The Wheatland Valley Edition is located on the east side of Markley Road, south of the Berkeley Family Recreation Area. It's got a total of seventy-eight lots and covers thirty-one acres. Um, there was an original proposal to plat it in two thousand and seventeen. Um, there were some pauses associated with finalizing and developing a benefit district for Markley Road, and that was done in November of two thousand and nineteen. And so by that point, all of Mr. Daley's applications had expired, and so we restarted the application review process on all of his items so that they could get back in front of the planning commission on December third, two thousand and nineteen. But there was a, uh, benefit district that was created for Markley Road. The city commission agreed upon a seventy-five, twenty-five percent cost-sharing arrangement for those future improvements. The trigger for those upgrades to Markley Road is when traffic volumes exceed sixty-five hundred cars per day, and right now, the traffic count is at thirty-eight hundred and sixty-five vehicles per day. So the planning commission approved, uh, Mr. Daley's plat in December two thousand and nineteen. Actually, in December two thousand and eighteen, the city commission had authorized staff to prepare a feasibility report for Phase One of his subdivision, but because of COVID and other items, Mr. Daley decided to wait before he moved forward, so the city commission authorized the feasibility report in two thousand and eighteen, but it came forward to you in June of two thousand and twenty-one. And there's twenty-nine lots in the first phase of that development, and the infrastructure's complete and home building is underway. Our records show that eleven of the twenty-nine lots in Phase One are occupied by new dwellings at this time. I can't speak to sales or other ones that are in different levels of construction, but there are, there are five, or eleven of the twenty-nine are occupied at this point. Mr. Daley has expressed to staff that he would like to move forward with plans for his Phase Two before he runs out of lots and fails Phase One, so he has filed this request, requesting that you authorize city staff to work with him on a feasibility report for Phase Two. And so we have summarized for you that in most recently, we have, um, the city commission has authorized the use of special assessment financing for Phase Two of Magnolia Hills, number two for Phase Two of Cedar Ridge Edition, and the Cedar Point Edition, two of those being on Cedar Ridge Drive. And so in the application, Mr. Daley has indicated that he plans to market and sell lots in the twenty-nine thousand to thirty-four thousand price range, and, um, looking at his previous application, uh, the price range is now in the range of three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand dollar homes, and I don't think his, his model or sizes or floor plans have changed. I think the increase in costs compared to Phase One are just that, their increase in construction costs. So we did a survey of the current, um, Board of Realtors multi-list, and there are currently ten existing homes on the market in Salina in that price range, and two of those are finished homes in the Wheatland Valley Edition. So based on the information provided by his design engineer, we're estimating that the assessments will be in the fifty-eight thousand to fifty-nine thousand dollar per lot range, and when you compare that to the lot price, they would be anywhere from a hundred and sixty-nine to two hundred percent of the projected lot price. So there's a provision in here about providing the commission with a five-year average of assessments against subdivision lots, and it's, it's kind of difficult to do a five-year average because there's been such a dramatic increase in specials in the most recent years. And so if we look at Magnolia Hills Estates, number two, their first phase was forty-three thousand per lot. That jumped to forty-eight thousand per lot in Phase Two, but if we look more recently, Phase Two of Cedar Ridge Edition was fifty-four thousand per lot and sixty-two thousand per lot in, uh, Cedar Point Edition. So I think the best comparison is in Phase One of Wheatland Valley. The assessments were thirty-eight thousand per lot, and they're projected to be fifty-eight thousand per lot in this next phase. Um, we do want to note that some of the lots in Phase Two did receive an upfront in, uh, assessment for some of the subdivision-wide improvements, so there's already about fifty-four hundred dollars in assessments on these lots. We've reviewed the topography, the size of the lots. We don't think any of them are unbuildable, and, um, in looking at the city's debt limits, the Director of Finance indicates that the city is currently at forty-one percent of its debt limit and that the issuance of bonds for this subdivision would not change. would not change that percentage as far as the city's debt limit. So on page 11 of your report, we've just done a summary of some of the subdivisions in the community and how many vacant lots are available. One thing we would note is that River Trail Second Edition was platted in 2016. It's fully built out. And Stone Lake addition only has five lots with infrastructure that are vacant. And so there are currently 29 vacant lots that are listed on multi-list as, as being for sale, and all but one of those are in Highland Meadows Hamlet or River Run or the Cedar Ridge addition Phase Two. And those are above the anticipated price points that Mr. Daley is, is trying to do here. So we're actively working on step one, assessment requests for Stone Lake addition, number two, Overlook Estates, Magnolia Hills Estates, number three, and Lakeview Estates, number two, that will be bringing you sometime this fall. So we just thought we'd give you an indication that this is the first of several requests that are going to come for, from the development community. But your options this afternoon would be to authorize staff to prepare an feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Phase Two for Wheatland Valley addition. You could postpone consideration of this item to provide staff with additional direction, or you could vote to instruct staff not to proceed with preparing an engineering feasibility report at this time. So as we note, the use of special assessment financing as a tool is completely discretionary on the part of the city commission. So with that, staff would be open to any questions that you might have. Mr. Daley is here behind me if you have any questions of him.
Questions for Commissioners?
No questions.
You mentioned the 58,000. Does that include the 5,400 that is coming from the first?
No, it does not. That would be standalone for the improvement, street, water, and sewer for this particular phase. So when you, part of the review is to just report to you if there's already some assessments on that lot. So the 58 to 59 would really be 63,000 to 64,000 per lot.
Thank you.
Do want to ask one other question. I've asked it three times in the last several years, and I'm not sure I still know the answer to it. But are the payments on the special assessments as deductible as mortgage interest? You know, if a person's paying $350 for the house, and there's another 58,000 for the lot, is that 58,000 treated similar to mortgage interest? I mean, you know, there's a cost of a house, and there's a real cost as of April 14th, right before you pay your taxes. But just, I've looked it up, and I can never find it online. I can't find the answer online at all. Anyone here knows the answer to that question?
I don't definitively know the answer. It would show up much like a assessment or property taxes, more so than mortgage. So it won't, it doesn't get financed as part of your mortgage. So my speculation would be that it'd be separate and distinct from
It's not part of the mortgage payment or...
So could you list it as a property tax, which part of, I guess that would be deductible?
Yeah, well, I certainly don't want to give tax advice off the cuff, but I don't believe so.
When we talk about the price of a home, you know, when you look at the real price of these houses is getting close to 100,000 more than the list price of the house. You know, so when we talk about meeting the, the criteria of our housing plan, we're actually, you know, looking at houses that are a whole grade up higher than the categories we had established before.
Yeah, and might be getting too far afield, and not to be editorial, but if it weren't special assessment financed, if it were privately financed and all that was rolled into the lot cost, and the lot cost was rolled into the purchase price, and that was all debt financed, then it would be part of your mortgage. But in special, in the special assessment financing approach, it's not structured as part of your mortgage. So I don't believe it would be deductible in the same way.
Just curious. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we may have to, I've been, was looking at our, our table that we have on page seven of your report, and it's got five categories, and it's 125,000 or below, 125 to 175, and 175 to 250. When Mr. Daley got started, that's kind of where he was looking at. But because of increase in materials and construction costs, I think most of the requests that you're going to see are going to be in those top two price ranges, not, not the middle one.
Are our categories still valid with current construction prices?
They certainly might be behind. We update the housing study periodically, and we can ask them to do that at the next update.
I had one question here on the page one. You know, the, the development looks like it's progressing well, and I don't know what stage you're into completion. But number six, a landscape burn buffering strip must be provided between Markley Road and the fence line of the 11 lots backing up to Markley. Has that been completed?
I do not believe it's been completed. It's something that staff is continuing to have discussions with Mr. Daley on, and his, as far as his options and timing on that. I might defer that to Mr. Daley, to what ideas he's been putting forward on that. But it's something that we're continuing to work with him on to get established as those 11 lots build out. But I'll defer that one to Mr. Daley.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the developer, Mr. Daley?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Dan Daley, 942 Barlow Drive. I'm the owner and operator of Wheatland Development Company. As far as the landscape border, when we platted those lots along Markley Road, they're intentionally made deeper than all the other lots in the development because they have a 10-foot utility easement at the back, and then just inside of the 10-foot utility easement, they have a 15-foot landscape buffer. And the goal and the hope there is that we can create a, an attractive border of Wheatland Valley along its, along its border with Markley Boulevard. There's a lot of traffic through there. And I'd like to see a continuous fence line along there. So we, what we did is we put in restrictive covenants. If anybody wanting a fence along there has to have it approved by me, and I will only approve fences that are all the same along there, same height, same color, same location on the, on the landscape border, so that it's a continuous line of fencing. And then on the outside of the fence line, which, which, like I said, should be continuous and the same materials, color, height, no in and out. It's got to be straight fence along there. And we'll put a row of trees on the outside of that once it's done. I think we, those lots that haven't sold so far in Phase One, most of them are along Markley there. There's, I think there's four or so lots that have sold along there, and there's only one home occupied so far. So I want to work with each of those, those homeowners as, as they, as they do their landscaping as far as keeping that a nice, clean look along there, along Markley Boulevard. If we go around to some of the other neighborhoods that have landscape areas along Main Thoroughfares like Schilling Road or Crawford or Magnolia, most of the fence lines that I see are, everybody puts in whatever they want. And it's all different. It's different heights, it's different colors, it's different styles. And my goal was to try to avoid that with Wheatland Valley.
Thank you. Any questions for the developer?
I'm glad to hear that you've taken that to heart, because some of the fence lines are rather ominous looking.
Yeah, I just feel like if we can keep it consistent along there and just have a row of trees or, and/or shrubs, depending what, what type of, you know, trees and things that we can find when we go to do it, then we'll try to keep it nice, nice looking along there.
Do you have a timeline on the build-out of Phase One and getting into Phase Two?
Well, sir, we, we completed the infrastructure build-out on Phase One one year ago this month. There are 29 lots in Phase One. All but five are sold. We have 11 houses under construction so far, more to start soon. But I'm down to five lots. And so because of the timeline required to go through, you know, city commission approvals, process, and, and build out of the infrastructure, I think we're still a year, year and a half away from having more lots to sell. I imagine those five lots will be gone long before that. I've got, I've had strong interest in Phase Two already, people wanting to pick out a lot already in that phase. Feel like it's time to get it going.
I'm glad things are going well.
They are, sir.
Addressing another piece of our housing issue.
Yes. Yeah. When I bought the property, I thought, well, I don't know if I'll live long enough to see all these lots built and, and houses on them. But right now, I think I will.
Looking good, huh? Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions or comments from the public? Bring her back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I move we authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Phase Two of Wheatland Valley addition for future consideration by the city commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Phase Two of Wheatland Valley addition for future consideration by the city commission. Callers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four zero. We'll welcome back Mayor Hoppick. I guess they're tag-teaming.
That takes care of development business. That will lead us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for individuals who would like to approach the commission with an item that was not on the agenda. We ask that you please give your name and where you're from, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. So...
Deborah Corrales. I want to discuss the DNA test that I had provided you guys with a couple of weeks ago. Ang was picked up as a loose dog on 4/28/21. He was returned the next day as an American Bulldog. Once a dog is identified as a pit bull, they do not leave the shelter until the court case is over and/or DNA results are in. Only then can you make arrangements to get your dog out of town. How they got that dog back, if it's a pit bull the next day, is amazing. The DNA came back on 5/15/21, 100% American Staffordshire, 100% match to 4/9/46/25/62, because they didn't even name the dog the second time they DNA'd it. Same dog or twin, 100% match. DNA showed two close, which would be Ang and the second time they DNA'd him. Three would be an extended and 41 distant relatives. Dog number 4/9/46/25/62 came in as a public drop-off on 1/23/22 as a terrier. DNA came back 2/8/22/68% American Staffordshire, 28% American Pit Bull, 2% Boxer, and 2% American Bulldog. So how they came up with 100% match, I'm confused. The second DNA showed two close, which would be Ang and Ang again. Three extended, but only 15 distant relatives, which makes absolutely no sense. Having done my own DNA, my count on distant relatives only went up. I called Wisdom Panel, and they were stumped. They're like, mm, no, they're 100% match. The DNA should match. The count of relatives should match. And everything else on those DNAs matched to the letter. After he was first picked up, that makes no sense having the, the DNA, accessory through DNA. On 4/28, exactly one year after he was picked up, they murdered him. He was never, ever identified on any paperwork at the shelter as a pit bull. He was either a bulldog or a terrier. Nowhere on his paperwork does it state he was ever identified as a pit bull. I've asked several times for access to the original emails from the Wisdom Panel. Having done my own on my dogs, I know how it comes. I've been denied. Last time, I believe he said he didn't, wasn't your word, you're not required to do that? Let me see the emails.
We didn't...
While you were rushing into that meeting over there?
Yeah, but you didn't request access to emails. You requested access to a third-party website provider that, then we're not required to do that.
No, no, no. All I said was I wanted to see the emails. I would sit down with anybody and view the emails, and you said you're not required to show me that. And I said, okay. But that doesn't mean you can't let me see the original emails. So if you're going to hide behind that, it only makes me more suspicious that these DNA tests are not coming back all pit bulls. Because the experts say DNA is the best way to do a DNA test. They came, but they've only mis-died, missed one dog as far as being a pit bull, and that was a friend of a friend of a friend that worked at the animal shelter. But when they don't DNA a dog, they don't even get the breed right. They got my dog as a retriever lab mix, and there's none of that in them. So I don't believe they're real. My three minutes is up. I will stop.
Yeah, but what I was going to say is, you, you, you come up here, and I guess I get confused. You keep throwing numbers at us. I think if you really want us to analyze what you're trying to get us to look at, we need it in writing or probably in an email if we're going to address it with staff, because you start throwing around...
Well, I gave, that's why I gave you the DNA thing, so you knew what I was talking about today.
I mean, we need it in kind of a simplistic order. I guess I call it DNA for dummies, because you're kind of, I mean, if we're going to address this, and that we can talk to staff.
Well, I know I spoke with Mike several months ago, and he said that he had dropped the whole ball on the whole DNA thing, and that it wasn't handled correctly. And I think you all should do another assessment. Do your own research. Don't, don't let somebody come up here and tell you what is what. Do your own research. Those dogs are not all bad, and BSL doesn't work. It's obvious. We got hundreds of these dogs here.
Thank you.
Can I ask just a question to stay?
Yes.
Is the issue of our identification of the dog by appearance and behavior often inaccurate, and that DNA would be more accurate?
No, actually, I think we're finding that, that the DNA backs up our, our animal control officer's identification. There's Kansas Supreme Court cases that talk about the appropriate basis for designation and the appropriate basis for assessment by an animal control officer. We're in compliance with that. The DNA is actually above and beyond that. The difficult, and I don't ever recall saying I dropped the ball in DNA. The issue...
Okay, just a second. We're...
So the, the issue with DNA as it relates to the court is, it's not admissible in court unless the technician who actually did the test is willing to be physically present to testify. And we don't, I'm not even sure where the, the lab is and where the technician's from, but we have not gone to the extent of, of using it in court on the basis that we don't expect the technician to testify in court. So it's additional information, but we're not relying on it for the purpose of court.
Is it owner-silly expensive, or all things considered relatively inexpensive?
The...
The actual DNA test itself?
Sixty something dollars, eighty dollars a test?
Eighty, mid eighties. I don't know exactly, but in the eighties.
So not, not terribly expensive, then? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Rose Base 1205 North Third. We was here last week, and we're going to continue to be here. I just wondered, have any of you visited the animal shelter yet? No? Okay. Do any of you know when it's going to be open?
We're still working on that, as we talked about last week.
Okay, well, we're going to start checking with some other... Okay, well, we're going to start checking with some other animal shelters in the state of Kansas to see what their hours and their policies are as far as opening up the kennels. That's really our main goal, is to get the kennels open, to let the public go in there and, and view the animals. It's not only the animals, it's for adoption, it's for the other animals that, that's waiting estrays that might be available the next day for adoption. So if a family doesn't see something one day, they might be able to see something the next. That is, if the records are up to date. But that's my concern. I would just like to, to see those kennels opened up to the public. I, I feel like by not letting the public in there after fourteen years of everybody being able to come into the shelter and go back and look into the kennels, when I was there, and like I said last week, my office being right next door, the noise issue isn't that big of a deal. I just, you know, I just feel like those animals aren't being socialized, they don't have enrichment toys, they don't get to see people. If you was in a four-by-eight cell, all the time secluded. And I think actually, the state inspector said it best is, you know, she's been there twice, and both times she's been there, the kennels have been dirty. So to me, that's telling me, that's why they don't want the public back in the kennels. Their kennels are not being cleaned properly like they should be. If they are, they should be proud to show you back through the kennels. It isn't a noise issue. Thank you, guys.
Hi, Michelle Simpson from Minneapolis. I went to the shelter on Saturday. They had what they called a little adoption event, and before I went down there, I did my homework, and I looked on the website and looked at the available dogs for adoption, because I didn't know how it was going to go. We had to ring the bell to get in, so the volunteer let us in. We went in about ten-thirty, and we went over to a table, and there were several pages laid out of the dogs that were available. Well, when I looked down there, I noticed two of the dogs on the table weren't on the website, so I mentioned that. I said, is this puppy available? And she said, yeah, that puppy's available. And I said, okay, what about this other dog? She said, yeah, I think so. So she had to verify, was somebody behind the desk? And yes, those two dogs were available. And I said, well, they're not on your website, and I would hope that they would be on your website, so that people could plan ahead of time and see what dogs are available. I mean, you planned an adoption event, and no one updated the website? Frustrating, that, that's very frustrating. So we asked if we could go back through the kennels, and she said, no, they could bring a dog, one out at a time for us. So we did that, we looked at a couple of dogs. My thing about that is, sometimes I'm looking for dogs for other people, people get ahold of me and say, hey, Michelle, can you find me this dog? Or for my mom, or us, we're looking for new family dogs. So it would be helpful to go back there and actually be able to see all the adoptable dogs, and not have to bring them out one at a time, because they couldn't bring multiples out at a time into the waiting area, and then some other people had showed up. The other thing that happened was, the dogs came out wet. They were, like, literally left water all over the floor, and I said, well, does this dog play in the water? And she said, no, they're still cleaning kennels. Like, okay, you're planning an adoption event, and you didn't come in, get the kennels clean, and have all hands on deck for, to help people look at adoptable animals? I've done many events, and to me, this just seems like a huge oversight, like, and there were three, there were at least four staff members there, and several volunteers. So my question would be, why didn't we get these kennels done before the adoption event? That was kind of frustrating, because no one really wants a wet dog jumping all over. I don't mind, because I'm a country girl, but some people just, it just didn't make sense. So I never saw the director there, and it feels like, if you're in the public eye right now, because your shelter has failed a couple of state inspections, that you would want to be at the event to show that you care, and it's important to you, but I never saw her, and we left at like eleven oh five. So most importantly, I want to know, we can get back there and look at all the dogs, and not bring them out one at a time. So, that's it. Thank you.
Does Mr. Hammond have an update on that?
On the, opening the shelters, I have not, I don't have an update as of today, as of right now. This plea, the, working on a plan to provide to the city manager this week, so we can expedite that decision process.
We look forward to hearing that next week.
I'm back. Linda Reynolds, I told you I'd come every week. I'm reading the guidelines that were made out in December of twenty-twenty-two for the animal shelter, and I just want to read a couple of things. It says shelters should remove barriers to local outcomes. Removing barriers can include accessible and convenient open hours, adoption and reclaim services in different languages, affordable adoption and reclaim fees, adoption and outreach events that reach the entire community, inclusive adoption policies. This is in the manual they have, and they're not following the manual, and this is from December of twenty-twenty-two. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor and Commissioners. I got this letter that I would like to read to you guys.
Could we have your name?
It's Ricky from, Ricky Miller from Salina.
Okay, thank you.
This letter concerns a major problem we have with our neighbors' chickens. The main issue affecting us is a very bad smell coming into our backyard and garage from the chicken feces. I've reached a point where it is now a health hazard for us. We are expecting many health issues. My doctor has documented that ammonia is, is so strong, it has led to difficulties breathing, inflammation of the eyes, chest tightness, scratchy throat, and being sick to our stomachs. The laws, the laws concerning the chickens in the city are clear and meant to be followed, even though the neighbor complied and moved the chickens coop fifty feet away from the property. He continues to violate the law, keeping the chickens in a different area of the coop. They are free to roam near my property, causing a bad smell in my backyard. It seems like a simple solution enforced this. Why does this problem continue? I've also, I, I've followed the procedure contacting the proper departments concerning the issue, and, and John from Neighborhood Control Representative concerning my complaint. John did a, a site visit, and we were told, also, he, he also noticed a strong ammonia smell. This situation has not properly monitored, or unfortunately, the problem remains unsolved after many months. He also said the chickens can roam part of the day where we have the concern. We moved the chicken, they, they roam the part of the day where they have the concern, why did, why move the chicken coop fifty feet away and not have the chicken coop, have the chicken with the chicken coop? The area where the chickens roam is eight feet from the garage, from the garage to the fence. I need answers or direction to fix this. Following the lawsuit is the option for us, however, it is not a choice I like to make, since it is, the cost of most money takes, that takes time and effort, and can be extremely, extremely stressful. I'm here to ask Commissioner, Commissioner and Mayor to help move the chickens to the chicken coop area, that it might help with the smell and ammonia. Also, the neighbor needs to clean up the chicken coop. That's all we ask for, plus the black, plus the, the tarp that, or the, or the fences. He puts like a tarp in, up, up against a fence to, to keep the smell out, or the other stuff that might cause.
Ricky, I'll be honest, I don't know what our regulations are in the city dealing with chickens, but what I would like you to do is, before we, this is our last item today, if you could get with, with city staff, yeah, and give us your address and contact information, so we can look into this.
Okay.
And we'll do that.
Okay, I have a doctor's notes.
And if you could, any documentation you have, if you would share that with city staff after the meeting, that would be great.
Okay.
And then we'll see what, get into that.
I am familiar with the location, I've looked at it, but some of the information you shared is new, so get with me after we're done here, please.
Okay.
And we'll do that, okay?
All right, thank you, guys.
Great, thank you for sharing with us.
Norman, out of Salina. How about at a public forum, why not have one at the beginning and the end of the meeting? It would accommodate everyone. A public utility board meeting I attended, they allow fifteen minutes for a person to speak. Back to consent and number five point two, that's like letting the fox guard the chicken house. You need someone who cannot be compromised by Commissioners or elected officials. You need an impartial individual in this position. And on the issue of animals...
Yeah, hey, could we please respect the gentleman that's speaking, please?
I'm all right with it.
We're not.
We can't hear you, because we're being distracted.
Yeah, thank you.
Turn your microphone up. House Resolution Number HR three four seven five, you need to read that. Under this section, under this section, no person may knowingly ship, transport, move, deliver, receive, possess, sell, or donate a dog or cat for slaughter, also horses.
Okay, do we have anyone else who would like to address us during open forum? Okay.
Commissioners, I don't think the, I think the agenda inadvertently didn't include other business, but if you have anything that you want to take up with staff, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Does a Commissioner have anything they'd like to bring before the group? Okay, if not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we will see everyone back here next week. And Ricky, please make sure you get us your information, if you would please. Thank you.